Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 10 zoning board hearing. Anybody have an opportunity to review the minutes from the last meeting? If so, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion too.
Motion by Mary, you have a second.
Second.
Second by John, all those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Looks like we have six hearings tonight. One will be drawn and postponed for a probably another time. With that, why don't we get right to the first hearing? I believe the first hearing on the docket is Valley Restaurant Group. This is on the applica-- and welcome. This is on the application of Valley Restaurant Group, 45 Depot Street, for special permit relief, section 3.1.4 of the zoning bylaw, relation to a parcel of land on the Wesley side of Depot Street, between Depot Street and railroad line, known and numbered as 45 Depot Street, and owned by AJH Properties LLC. The special relief is sought in order to permit the applicant to install a roof over the existing exterior deck of the premises. On this panel, it will be all the full five members of the board. We do have a lengthy application here.
Can we dispense with the reading if it's exactly as it's been presented?
We have a motion to dispense with the reading as long as it's indicated in the application. It is. With that, I'll take a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mary, you have a second. By Mark, all those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Let me just make a quick comment prior to Attorney Pettenari presenting the-- on behalf of the petitioner. The planning board, paraphrasing this, the planning board did review this at their October 17 meeting and did vote favorable. And also, town planner indicates that the existing structure isn't conforming as to the front side and rear yard setbacks, henceforth the need for the special permit approval. No other changes to the property being proposed, and town planner also recommended a favorable report be sent off to this board. With that, Attorney Pettenari, give us an idea what your--
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am Ernie Pettenari. My law office in Milford is at 12 Main Street. I'm here tonight with Adam Hicks that you might remember because we were here this summer, at which time we sought a special permit to authorize the operation of his restaurant, the Depot Street Tavern, on the external deck facility that's at the premises. At that same time, we went to the Board of Selectmen and the ABCC, and we had all the licenses amended to reflect the extension of the service area. After that was done, Adam actually acquired the property. He's now the owner of the property, and it's held in the AJH LLC, as is reported on the application. Because this building is located too close to Depot Street, he can't do anything by way of renovation without a further special permit. What he's here tonight to ask this board for is permission to create a roof over the external deck. The outside dining has gone very, very well. It's been very successful and very well received. But with the change of seasons and the advent of rain and that kind of weather, his investment's taken a little bit of a hit because he's got equipment and furniture and things that he's got located outside that are deteriorating because of the weather. The proposal before you is to do just this, to extend the roof over the deck. There won't be any permanent walls at any time. It is only to facilitate the continued operation at the level of occupancy, at the level of intensity that he's currently using. We think it's a fairly reasonable request. The planning board seems to agree. In the interim time, Mr. Chairman, that's basically the presentation, and we're here to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. I'll start with you, Charlie, on your end.
The only thing I saw, there isn't going to be any permanent walls. It's just a cover over it to protect the equipment during the off-season.
And the patrons as well, but yes.
Yeah, okay. And how many seasons is it going to operate with the--
Again, as much as he can. I mean, again, nobody has ever really asked that question. We talked to the Board of Selectmen about that. So long as the operations are still being done and handled the way he's been handling them, nobody's asked that question relative to enforcement. Realistically, he envisions that the winter time is just not going to make it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Do you envision that you might fully enclose and make it a four-season at some point? No?
No. The idea has been that the alfresco dining is a draw. People like it. And actually, they like it as long as they're not either freezing cold or being rained on. So this is kind of the solution.
Yep.
Just one question. Are you going to have, for the winter months, I should say, curtains to come down to block off temporary closure?
Yeah, at night, that kind of thing. Yes.
Probably some heaters too. I see a lot of restaurants, when it gets a little nippy, they do some of those outside things.
Yeah, probably. Remember, we've got only that limited amount of space. But yes, whatever would work to make him--
Keep the premises available is what we're thinking of right now.
Mary?
No, I think it's great. I went by there today. It looks great. And have put the roof over it. It'll give you a little more utility for it.
Thank you.
I'm all set. John?
I'm set.
With that, you have the last word before--
Well, the reality of this is, is this is really kind of a housekeeping maintenance kind of thing on any other building except for its proximity to the road. I think that Adam's been running that restaurant now for several years. I think his record there speaks for itself. And I think this is just a reasonable adjunct to what he's been doing. So we hope for your favorable action.
Okay. Anybody else want to be heard on this? If not, we'll close the hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mary.
To accept this presented.
Second by John. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. Did you give me this? Okay. Moving along. This is on the application of Rosaline Pine, 12th Congress Street. This is for variances for the lot size width of the provisions of section 2.5 of the zoning bylaw in relation to a parcel of land located on the east side of Congress Street, known and numbered as 123 Congress Street. It's shown on its asset sheet, 35, Block 22, Lot 5, and owned by the petitioner. The variance release is sought in order to relocate an existing lot line between the two lots, with the subject resulting in a new lot with 11,400 square feet in area and a 95-foot width. By the way, the-- Brian, you'll be on this.
Okay.
Going through the application, since there's going to be a bunch of variances, is this all as it was from a similar application?
Yes.
So I'll take a motion.
I'll take-- I'll dispense with the-- I'll make a motion, dispense with the reading.
We have a motion to dispense with the reading.
Do we have a second?
You have a second on that. Mark, any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. I will read into the record. The planning board did review this at its November 1st, 2016 meeting, and recommends a favorable stipulation, no other variances to be granted. Town planner indication indicates that the location of the house on Lot 5, the southerly lot, does not meet the side yard setback requirements from the northerly side property line. This variance will result in two lots. The new northerly lot to be 11,004 square feet in area and having 95 feet of width and 15,000 square feet of area and 100 feet will be required in the IB zone. Therefore, he recommended a favorable report be sent off to the zoning board. With that, Attorney Pettenari, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I'm Ernie Pettenari. I'm a lawyer here in Milford. My office is at 12 Main Street. I've put two diagrammatic plans on the wall, just for your reference. The first, obviously, is the engineering plan as it was prepared by Gary Aaron Halman. The second is the same plan. And what I did was I tried to show you where the existing lot line currently is. It's important, as a pointed departure, to understand that the map that I've handed out that shows the lots outlined in red is the current status of those two lots that Mrs. Pine owns. Those two lots both currently meet zoning requirements in terms of dimensional and width, et cetera, provisions of the bylaw. It's important to understand that the reason that Mrs. Pine is here is because these two lots have always been thought of by Mrs. Pine and her family as being two buildable lots, until analysis was done when she had the property engineered and the house that's-- Mrs. Pine's residence that's located on what is shown on this plan as Lot 5 would be too close to the existing lot line as it's shown there. So the alternatives presented to Mrs. Pine and her family were, could we go in and get an 81P and ANR plan signed by getting a variance on the house, bringing that side yard setback to within about six feet of the existing structure? Or would it make more sense to move this lot line in a northerly direction about 12 feet so that by doing that, this house would then conform to all setbacks? And any house that was to be constructed on the new lot would also conform to new set-- to all the applicable setbacks? We thought that was the preferable alternative. So the request before you tonight is to grant a variance so that this lot line can be moved in this direction and placed here so that this will be a conforming residence in terms of setbacks, and this will be a conforming residence in terms of setbacks, except for the lot area and the lot width at the house line, this lot would also conform. What this lot ends up being is 11,400 square feet. The zoning requires 15,000. And the lot width at the house line is 95 feet, and the requirement in the bylaw is 100. There's ample frontage. There's plenty of setback area. And interestingly enough, when I sat down and I did some analysis of the neighborhood, and that's attached to the memorandum I prepared, I created a map. There are 33 abutters to this property. Out of those 33 abutters, 29 are single-family residences. Out of those, 25 do not conform to the 15,000 minimum requirement already. So if you take a look at the map that I've attached to the bylaw, I've designated with an X, all of the houses that are abutters to Mrs. Pine's property, which do not meet the 15,000 square foot minimum. So we believe that the creation of this lot, with the lot width and the resultant smaller lot, leaving more of a neighborhood feel so that the houses can have the necessary setbacks between them and the lot lines, especially in light of the neighborhood conditions, makes sense. It restores these lots to what had been their expectation all the years they've owned them, and it restores these lots to the usability which she was planning on, but only suddenly discovered that it was no longer applicable to her because of the location of the house. Again, that's our presentation. If there's any questions, we're here to answer them for you.
Charlie, any questions? I'll start with you.
So basically, the issue was that the original house, and I think you were going down--
The hills.
The hills, okay. So when that was built, was built too close to the lot lines between those lots, correct?
Correct, yeah.
And the only other question I had, and I think you addressed it, was that the planning recommendation came down to there will be no more variance. Once you have this, somebody goes to put a house there, they're going to be-- what they're getting here today will allow them to put that house in there.
What I said to the planning board, and I want to be clear, I want to be consistent. I said to the planning board, "We're not asking for any variance for construction. All we're looking to do is to put that lot line where it is." And I said, "Until or unless there's a house plan, that request isn't being made." So there is no authority that would be coming from this grant with specific reference to building the house. I don't know, frankly, that the planning board, or you even, can restrict somebody from making a further application. But not us. I mean, that's not our application.
Okay.
And the answer to the primary question is, this square would get a fairly good-sized house, consistent with the neighborhood, all within all the existing setbacks. So it's very unlikely, in my present opinion, that anybody would need to do anything more than that. Thank you.
So just area and lot width? Those are the only variances for the new lot?
Correct.
Okay. That's all, thanks. No questions.
I don't have anything. I find it interesting that, looking at the aerial map that you provided, that these are the two biggest lots in the area.
They're the only two that are amongst those abutters that conform to zoning, except for houses which are located way down here on Rosenfeld and way up here on West Fountain.
Mary?
I'm all set.
John, I'm all set. Anybody else want to be heard on this matter? If not, will-- you have your last word before we close the hearing.
Again, I think that everybody knows Mrs. Pine and her family. I think that you understand that the nature of the situation in front of you is to give relief from a condition which, until very recently, she didn't know affected the property. And we believe that the relief is reasonable in tighter neighborhood planning and zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Pettenari. All right, we'll close the hearing. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mark, you have a second. Second by Mary. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Thanks for coming in, Mrs. Pine.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Are you on the next one too, Ernie?
No, I'm done. Thank you, David.
Plan that was given in the file, is this the exact same plan? The plan that was given to me in the file, is this the exact same plan?
Yes. Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Okay. Moving right along. It is after 7:15. This is on the application of East Main Street Properties LLC. I have a letter that I'd like to read to the record. And this is from Robert Parkinson from Garen Hanlon. "On behalf of the client, East Main Street Properties, we are withdrawing without prejudice the application of a special permit for the construction of a gasoline station on the property of 150 D1, 1509 East Main Street, and you will be resubmitting at a future date." We do need to vote to accept this. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept.
By Mary, you have a second.
Second.
Second by John. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. We're already on 7:20. This is the application of Ed Whitaker.
Hey, John.
You think-- I think you did. Okay. And they're getting set up. It's on the application of Edward Whitaker, 85 South Bow Street, for special permit relief in relation property at 28,828 plus or minus square feet, located on the southeastally intersection of South Bow Street and Central Street, known and numbered as 85 South Bow. The special permit relief is sought subsequent to section 2.43 of the zoning bylaw in order to permit the use of the property to be used for motor vehicle sales in conjunction with the office and warehouse use already on the premises. The application indicates that the property is in the IB zone and commercial uses is surrounded by the parcel. Concerning the question, it was the proposed use, premises will not create undue traffic or congestion or impair pedestrian safety. The applicant states the proposed use will have the required parking and building will have ADA access. All other parking areas will have safe traffic flow and required parking dimensions. Concerning the question, was the proposed use of the property will not cause harm to the neighborhood or create nuisance or hazardous affecting the wealth, safety, and welfare of the general public. The applicant states that the site is located in the IB district for which the proposed uses are allowed. Therefore, no such harm or hazard to the neighborhood is expected. To paraphrase from the planning board, this was reviewed at the regular scheduled meeting of November 1st. And the planning board did vote favorable. The town planner indicated that the proposed use, car sales business appears to be approved generally as to use, the specific arrangement of all the off-street parking areas and number of vehicles to be displayed for sale will be determined by the planning board during the required formal site plan review and subsequent to a ZBA special permit. It also indicates that the-- this is-- will be in addition to general office use, a solar energy company and a 3,500-square-foot warehouse space are cut granted to occupy the site. Auto sales are also allowed under the special permit. Therefore, he does recommend a favorable report to the zoning board of appeals of the used car sales generally, as noted in the site plan and will be resubmitted to the planning board as well. With that, Attorney Fernandez, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name's John Fernandez. I'm an attorney. My law office is at 12 Main Street here in Milford. And I'm here with Mr. Whitaker, who is the principal of the LLC, the sole member of the LLC that owns this property down at the corner of South Bow and Central Street. Central Street is up here. The Sorento is over here. Senior Center across. The new assisted living facility behind. And South Bow runs up this way and then turns and goes up towards Main Street. This is an approximately 29-- just shy of 29,000 square feet of pre-existing, non-conforming, landed building that, as you know, has been there for years, occupied as a contractor's yard, warehouse, retail, just about everything that could possibly be done. Mr. Whitaker purchased this approximately a year ago. It's a matter of public record. It was over $300,000 for the building. He's invested a significant six figures into the building since then, into the property and the building in order to upgrade the exterior, even going so far as to match the siding that's on it to the siding that's on the building just across the street so that there would be some consistency coming down the street. He's very conscious of trying to make this an attractive site. And what he's trying to do is make sure that he can fully occupy and utilize the site. So right now, you can-- this is before the planning board for site planning, subsequent to this meeting. We've been before the planning board for the recommendation, have worked with Larry Duncan and the board in terms of the general layout of the site. And we'll post this, go back at the next meeting of the planning board for finishing up the site plan. But just for background, this area, there's an entranceway here, just shy of Railroad Street, that will have parking paved in here. The area that comes in off of Central Street has an entrance here. But there's a fence that goes along this area here, connects with the building, such that there is no ability to cut into this without actually entering the building. And that fence area will remain. Right now, it's just a chain-linked style fence. But the intention, if this is granted, is to upgrade that to a more decorative fence. The goal to be both to make the area, that corner, more attractive, as well as to keep cars from going out and people from coming in to where those cars are located. So it is this area here that we are actually before you tonight relative to the used car sales, as well as the interior office. So for purposes of the site itself, parking here, used car in here. This is a warehouse used by a granite company. So there's very little traffic. It's occasional. This is a warehouse area used by Mr. Whitaker in his solar business. Again, very little traffic generated coming in. This is the office space that is primarily used in here by Mr. Whitaker, by his staff. This is another small office that's unoccupied and may in fact not be occupied. It kind of rolls into this. And so the goal is, in order to continue to be able to make the investment he wants to make in the property, he wants to fully utilize the property in the ways that are appropriate to the district. So it's in the IA zone. Used cars allowed in the IA zone by way of special permit, as used cars are anywhere. So what he is asking for is permission to utilize the area here within the site for used car sales. He would utilize the office here internally. He doesn't expect a ton of traffic from that, by any stretch. But it meets the appropriate traffic parking requirements on-site for the used car sales. And what Larry is saying is that, obviously, the number of cars that are going to be allowed-- what GNH did in designing this plan was say, "Well, we could put," I think it's like 12 cars out there, "by this kind of a design." But the number of cars that actually get located on the site are determined by the planning board in what the site they feel will hold for site planning, and of course, more appropriately, by the Board of Selectmen, which issues the Class II license if this board grants the opportunity to do so. And Mr. Whitaker has some background in privately purchasing cars and has some automobiles that are classics of his own, but will intend to enter this as a part of his business and also have a person who will be involved with him who's very experienced in the automobile sales to participate. So we're asking for your favorable consideration. We think that having cars parked in there will not be detrimental to the neighborhood in any way. It would otherwise be parking regardless. So the cars that'll be there will not look out of place. And it's an appropriate use, as determined by our bylaw, for a particular piece of property in the IA zone. So happy to answer any questions, but ask for your favorable consideration.
All right. John, I'll start on your end of the table.
Mr. Fernandez, this will be the only area--
Where cars will be located. On the-- And you're pointing, so that people can see, he's pointing to this area here. That would be the only area where cars for sale would be located.
And in other words, there would be none stored in the back?
No.
Okay.
Nope.
Okay. I'm all set. Mary?
How about as far as car repairs?
No car repairs.
So they'll be taken on--
So that would be done, right.
Off-site?
Right, exactly.
No car detailing, just straight?
You're not intending to do it, no. There's really not the space to do that in here. This is-- As I said, and if you were out on the site, it's not even easily accessed warehouse space in that you couldn't drive a car into it to do detailing. So, this is office, warehouse, warehouse, contractor. And so, this is the space here. The rest of the lot is taken up with the required parking, except this area back here, which is actually the, the warehouse is accessed from here, the warehouse is accessed from here. Those are the loading docks. So, it's not like you can do a lot in this space anyway.
So, so the fencing that's out there currently now, that's in deplorable condition, that'll be replaced?
The fencing's going to be replaced, absolutely.
No questions, no.
Brian? What, what kind of fencing is going to go along?
A decorative-type fencing, I don't know if you've actually picked it out yet.
Yeah, haven't determined.
It's not going to be stockade to block the view, the opposite, this is going to be-
Correct, correct. You want people to be able to see the cars, but a nicer style of fence than what's out there now, because that is a turning issue. If that's what you're considering, that you want to block the car, the line of sight.
This is, you said, Class II?
It's a Class II, yes, yeah.
Did you say it's going to be classic cars or?
No, 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 he has some experience in classic cars, no. In terms of his own ownership.
Thank you.
Joe?
Yeah, and, Mr. Whitaker is going to be totally in control of all the businesses on this site.
Well, he doesn't own the granite business, but he owns the property and as the lessor controls the site. This license will be used by him, but we're, we're not asking that it be made personal because he may have, in partnership with somebody else, the use of the property or, or lease it, but-
But it's going, the, the license is going to the applicant.
License would be, well, not necessarily to, the, the applicant here in this case is the entity which owns the property. More likely than not, another entity would be set up to own and operate the automobile business. So, you don't need to make a used car license special permit particular to the applicant because it is the Board of Selectmen that will determine that the applicant is a proper person in that regard.
So, he's not necessarily going to be the one that's selling the cars?
Well, he'll be, he, he will absolutely be involved in the business, yes. But he may have a partner or employees that would work with him to do that. So, that's, that's, that's why we wouldn't want to limit it to this specific LLC because that would, you know, that the, the LLC was set up to own the property. I wasn't engaged in the application process itself and might have suggested setting up another LLC prior to application, but it's probably going to be something that comes at a later, at a later date if it's approved.
What's to stop him just from having anyone then run the business if it's, and we wouldn't even, if he's not going to be running the used car sale business, can you just have anyone else then do it?
Well, anyone who, no one can just run the, he, the license-
So, he's going to go before the Selectmen?
Exactly, anybody-
He'll be, it'll be, it'll be his business.
He'll be before the Selectmen, but if it was someone else at another point in time-
They would have to.
They would have to go before them. You can't just say, hey, I got approval to do this, go sell cars. Anybody who's going to be the person operating a business down, they will have to present themselves to the Board of Selectmen.
I just wanted to clarify that.
And that's what Larry's pointing out is, you're just making a determination or we're asking you to make a determination that the site is in fact okay and appropriate for used car sales. Then the site planning process with the planning board will determine how many cars they would allow and then the Board of Selectmen will determine proper person as well as their idea of what, I mean, the site, the planning board may say, we're okay with twelve cars, the Board of Selectmen say, we only want to have six. And the planning board may say, no, Mr. Whitaker, we don't think you're the right guy to operate this. We want somebody else, not going to happen, but, you know, that's their prerogative to make that determination as the proper person.
Just one more question, is there any future thoughts about any coverage over these cars at all? They're going to be left open to the weather. Because I noticed you're in solar company, you're in solar business and a lot of places are now just putting up solar.
Carports.
And they seek capital.
The carports, yeah.
No, we-
Okay.
The only, the only, just some clarity, John, and I guess the clarity is basically the, you don't know where the fencing is going, with the exception of the front, correct?
No, the fencing will be where it is now.
Okay.
Where the fencing, where the fencing go, the fencing you see out there today will be replaced as it is located out there with a decorative fencing.
And if we put a condition in there that the fencing that is there, that fencing shall be maintained in a good and, and manner would be okay. So, if it, if it, someone backs into it, because if he's not selling the cars, he now has a different company, then no one's got control over that fence and it could be looked damaged forever.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't want to leave the perception that he's here doing this and doesn't know what he's going to do. In this particular instance, he's going to be a participant in the used car sales. There may come a point in time where, you know, his other businesses prohibit him from wanting to continue to do it and he leases it to a third party. But, yeah, I mean, it's- By your decision, it will always be contained to here. By your decision, there has to be a fence well-maintained by the Board of Select, by the planning board's decision. There'll only be so many cars allowed onsite as a, as a function of traveling within the site. And by the Board of Selectmen's view and decision, there'll only be an appropriate person running it and with a certain number of cars. And as a landlord, yeah, he's going to have the obligation to make sure your special permit is honored, no matter what's happening on that site. Just like he's going to have an obligation to make sure that the tenant who does the granite doesn't violate the site plan, you know? So, it's going to be his obligation as a landlord to make sure that this special permit you issue is, is honored. So, at all points in time, you have him responsible for whatever your decision is.
Okay, so, and just to be clear, there'll be no fencing along South Bow Street? There'll be just, the cars will just-
Right now, the fencing, yeah, the fencing actually runs from, from here-
Yep.
Chairman, along here, up and connects to the building.
Okay.
And this then is the building- Which creates a wall right along South Bow. Then we're going to have, we have- Drive by there now, you'd see they just redid the area? They repaved it? They left a curb cut in here. They're not putting down the granite yet, they're not putting down the sidewalk finally yet for the season. They're letting that stay. But they left this opening here and then you have parking arranged on both sides here. Loading dock, loading dock, entry, parking, fence comes up. Larry is it. From his perspective, that's necessary, just from people walking down the street. You don't want them walking by and scraping the cars, you know? So, he's going to wa-
Anyone else in the audience want to be heard on this? If not, do you have your last word before we-
My last word is just that I ask that you consider this favorably.
Thank you, we'll, we'll close the hearing. Okay, it's a pleasure to be with you. No, you can take it. So, what would you like on the, we'll have the condition in there that the fencing shall be maintained? New fencing shall be installed, the length of the identified property and that shall be continually to maintain in good condition?
Okay.
Okay?
Sounds good to me.
Anything else?
Nope.
Brian? If not, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by John. Second?
Oh, second.
Second by Dave.
That's okay, Dave, I insist, I insist, give it to Dave.
Second by Dave, all those in favor of what is outlined?
With the condition?
With the condition. Okay, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good night.
Okay, and you are the last applicant. This would, is, Mr. Elcori, is that how you pronounce it?
Yes.
Okay, why don't you have a seat? If you have something to pass out to the board, please do.
Excellent. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
If you have something to put up, please. Okay. Please do, thank you.
This is on the application, Elcori, Elcori of 76 East Main Street for special permit relief in relation to a twenty-six thousand three hundred and ten square foot parcel of land, more or less, located in the north of the intersection of East Main Street and Mead Street. Which parcel is known and numbered as seventy-six East Main Street. The special permit relief is sought pursuant to section two point three of the zoning bylaw in order to permit the addition of a used automobile sales to the auto repair and service facility currently on the premises. With that, reviewing the application, the applicant was, was explaining the reasons that you served the special permit as it sought in harmony with the general purpose intended for the zoning bylaw. The applicant did state the property is an auto repair service currently in auto sales and an expansion of the town's use. Concerning the proposed use of the premises will not create undue traffic or impair pedestrian safety, the applicant stated that the property will not create any additional traffic. The site is also an automobile repair facility and this is an extension of the automobile services. Concerning the premises will not cause, cause harm or create a nuisance of hazard affecting the health, safety and welfare of the general public. The applicant states that the site is an enabled commercial zone in Milford. The commercial uses are located on Route sixteen. With that, the planning board did review the listed property and schedule for the November first meeting and they did recommend the favorable recommendations to the zoning board. See Town Planner letter. I, I want to go through this letter carefully, so I want to, I want to read the whole letter. The applicant requests a special permit to establish used car sales as an additional use on the subject property. This will be in addition to auto and truck repair use currently occupying the site. Auto sales uses are allowed under the special permit in the C V zone. The proposed used car sales business appears to be approved generally as to use. Specific arrangement of off-street parking and the number of vehicles to be displayed for sale will be determined by the planning board during the required formal site plan review subsequent to a Z V A issuance of this special permit. However, it must be noted that this property is subject to an activity and use limitation, A U L, as per Mass General Laws twenty-one each, section six and three-ten, CMR forty, due to petroleum contamination that had occurred on the site prior to nineteen eighty-five from the former bus company garage that was there before. Therefore, any changes proposed with the A U L area must first be analyzed by a licensed site professional or L S P who must then prepare and publish an evaluation indicating the property or not of such proposed changes. Until such time, a proper analysis and evaluation are completed. As noted above, the expanded auto display area will be proposed beyond the existing pavement cannot be considered as this area is within the A U L. Therefore, you would recommend a favorable report to the zoning board as to its use generally as a used car sales and as noted above, a site plan will need to be submitted to the planning board for approval. With that, gentlemen, the floor is yours. Tell me what you want to do. The microphone is there, please make sure you speak into the microphone.
We, we purchased the Midas store, about, the Midas garage about a couple of months ago. We come from a family, we're a family-owned business. We've been running gas stations, car sales, car repair for over fifteen years. Me and my brother, my cousin, we're basically family-owned together. We purchased Midas store about two months ago and it has plenty of parking and caught our eye to expand a little bit, to put some used car sales and, you know, trying to generate more jobs for the town and trying to expand, you know, trying to expand and utilize the place as much as we could. We own multiple locations, we have one in Seekonk, Massachusetts. We have one in Swansea, Mass. We own dealerships. We try to keep a clean name, try to keep within, you know, the town bylaws, within the town rules and try to expand and try to make, you know, whatever we could in this world. We went to Geyer, Geyer Engineering, I'm trying to spell it wrong. And they already had the site plan that they did back in seven, nineteen seventy-six or seventy-eight. And they came along and they did all the insight for us. All the planning came through them and we're asking if we could, you know, be favorable to have used car sales over there.
Okay. With that, Charles, I'll start with you.
Okay. How many cars are you looking at selling on your property or how many cars have available?
As of right now, we have none available.
I'm saying, what are you planning for the-
We're planning, from what, they, they studied, you know, the parking that we have and what we have for garage and what we're supposed to have for empty parking for the customers that showed up, came out to be about twenty-three cars.
And that still provides good parking for the customers that are going into the old Midas building to have their cars repaired?
Yes.
Brian?
Are you working yet with a licensed site professional on that A U L issue that the Town Planner raised in his letter?
Are you familiar with the issue?
The issue, the contamination in the ground. To be honest with you, was, we worked with, you know, Geyer was Peter LaVoy, the, the gentleman who helped us out with that. And after he helped me with the, you know, town bylaws and we were right up together and he said that parking above, it's just, we're just parking the cars. We're not changing anything, we're not doing anything that's going to affect the contaminated area whatsoever. And, I mean, not really, other than that, to be honest with you, we didn't, we didn't get anybody else. Because they said it's four feet underneath and we literally not touching anything above, below the surface.
So, it's an existing parking lot and you're, it's probably just going to be used cars there, but you're, you're going to maintain the parking lot?
Of course, yes. We're going to maintain the parking. We're just going to park the five cars above that area that we're talking about and there's going to be nine cars behind it. Just, you know, for show, for display, that's, that's about it. We're not going to change anything over there or, we're actually going to have to do a, we're going to do-
But you are expanding, this is showing that you're expanding the parking lot.
No, we're going to keep it the way it is.
You're parking on gravel?
It's crushed stone. We're going to have to put the bumper stops for the cars, for the-
This is all pavement over here and right about here is all crushed stones. So, these six cars actually will be parked on the crushed-
So, all the landscaping that was done before is all ripped up?
The landscaping, the bushes, the brushes are gone.
We're going to have to put new ones.
We're going to have to replace them with these bushes.
So, you're going to be replacing that landscaping?
The smaller bushes, not as big because of the, of the site, for the come out in and out. But this is already crushed stone, the first chance, long ago, we just be parking above it.
I can just reference the letter. No, I'm all set.
Mark?
No, no, Brian asked, say what I would have asked.
Yeah, so you're going to be doing car repairs?
Um, we, yes, currently doing car repairs.
Okay, so you'll be servicing all the, if you are able to get twenty-three cars?
Yes, ma'am.
Will you do any other type of repairs for any other cars that would come in or?
We're currently doing it for the public and for, for business for-
Oh, okay, so it already is a car repair business there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, the, the only, the only question I have is that, it is stated in this letter. Is anyone going to come out and, is it because they're not making any change, they don't have to-
We'll ref, just reference the letter and the decision.
Yeah, okay.
And then we're there, that'll be, that should cover us.
Okay, because I just, I have a concern seeing it was noted here that something. So, the only thing different with this lot is you're going to have twenty-three cars for sale.
Well, they'll, the planning board will-
Yeah, if they allow you that many. You're doing any different curb cuts or anything? I mean, I know the site was kind of wide open there a bit.
We're going to put the bumpers, the, they call them, the bumper stoppers for the cars. We just kind of lay them in the front, so the cars, you know, but that can protect them in front of the cars, that's it. And the bushes, of course.
Okay, and where will they, will they be exiting onto Mead Street and then going out onto East Main or how is this?
The exit, these cars-
I just want to know how much traffic is going to be?
We, we have three entrances. The entrance right here.
Yep.
We have this and, these entrance, those two entrances right here. These cars just park. If you ever have to move them, you'll definitely leave the car behind them.
Okay.
Move these cars and nothing will be coming ahead.
Okay, that's what I wanted to-
Because the bushes and everything else.
So, you never had a curb cut on East Main Street before?
No, when we came in-
That's a new curb cut?
No, that was-
That was existing, right?
That was there.
This basically, oh, what we did is just laid it out so the cars will-
You laid it out differently to make the cars, okay.
The Midas roughly had a curb cut on East Main Street.
Yeah, right.
And-
And two on, you mean-
And two on Mead.
So, nothing's changed that way.
Wasn't, it wasn't Midas, it was, we took it over, we never closed it, it's open in general for public. We repair cars and, you know, we're just going to repair our cars and the car, you know, the publics.
Are the hours of operation going to be any different now that you've got car sales?
Eight to six.
And that's seven days a week?
Six days a week, Saturday eight to four.
Okay, and you're not going to, you will have no business on Sunday?
No.
No selling cars, nothing?
Selling cars, nothing.
Okay.
I'm, my only comment, I don't have a problem with it, my only comment is that you guys know how to count to twenty-three, right? Because what hap, whatever, what happens with everyone is that you get twenty-three cars out there, then they put six inside the garage and there's four over on the side and now you have thirty-five cars there. So, I think the way, the way it works in Milford is you've got to have twenty-three unregistered vehicles on the property. So, if you have, if, some people have gotten trouble before because they parked five cars across the street or down the street or whatever, you know what I mean? So, if, if, that's what I'm saying. If you ask for twenty-three, it's, it's not twenty-three and then seven inside and two across the street and everything like that.
One hundred percent. We have, all our, other licenses, we've been open for, with any, it's never had a problem.
Yeah.
Count cars, just seeing, count.
Okay, but unregistered cars, it's a combination of the cars for sale-
Yes.
And unregistered cars you're working on, so be careful of that.
Yeah, just, I mean, you guys always have the right to come back and ask for more cars than twenty-three. You can always, you can always come back and say, hey, we, we need thirty or whatever, you know what I mean? So, that's, that's my only comment, okay?
And of course, this, this license will run to the applicant, I'm assuming. Usually, when, when we go down this road, the, we try to make sure that the yard does not get full of auto parts. So, there'll be no auto parts or repair allowed in the lot whatsoever and that includes even a changing a tire. So, everything's got to be done in the garage.
Okay.
John, you have anything else?
Just one thing. I will compliment you, gentlemen, for the improvement you've done to the property. It's certainly better looking now than when, when it was Midas. The only thing that became a pro, well, one of the things that became a problem down there was the weeds that grew in that stone area where the, where the stones are. So, actually taking some of that stone out should eliminate some of that unsightliness of the weeds overgrowing there. Personally, I think twenty-three cars is a lot for that lot. That's my feeling. It looks to me like you're squeezing this, this last six in up here just to get more cars in there. But, again, that would be approved, Mr. Chairman, by the-
Planning board, the planning board will make a determination once they review.
Twenty-three is too much. Okay, that's fine. But I will compliment you that the area's been cleaned up and it looks much, much better.
Yeah, it's, it's nice to see a nice, clean operation and a nice, clean when it stays that way.
Absolutely.
It, it helps the entire community.
And that will help your business also. Absolutely. Yeah, well, you're very visible there, you know? You're basically on Main Street in Milford. So, to keep the property up and would certainly be the R advantage, you know?
And, and make sure you keep count of the cars.
We will.
Kind of gets away with it.
Because it does end up ugly for, for some people that, that they can't, you know, they have ten and all of a sudden there's twenty there. That license doesn't get renewed the following year, so you kind of get it.
Yeah, in other words, don't park them at V F W.
Okay, well, I think, anybody else want to be heard in the audience? If not, you have the last word before we close the hearing? If not, you have the last word before we close the hearing?
We just, we really appreciate if you guys consider them favorable for our, for our future kids' sake, basically.